Good evening, everybody. Is this working? Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the March, no, April sixteenth meeting of the Planning Board. We have, we have everybody here tonight. We've got two sets of minutes to approve. The first set is from the earlier workshop, so I'll look for a motion to approve those.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Posed, any exempt, exempt, one exemption. Exemption. Okay, we're moving on to the regular meeting minutes, so I'll look for a motion for those.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, moved and seconded, discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions. One abstention. All right. No staff plan approvals? No minor change approvals? So we'll get into hearings and presentations. Do we need to formally table number one, Carla?
I think so.
Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to table the first item, which is the sketch plan review of the school campus.
Make a motion that we table the proposed revision of overall master plan for main school administrative district fifty-one for expansion to include additional land and a new school.
Second.
A second? Seconded. All in favor? Opposed? Then it's approved, we'll go into item two, which is a public hearing to provide a recommendation to the town council on proposed amendments to the Cumberland Code of Ordinances, Chapter three fifteen zoning section four, word usage and definitions to add main school administrative fifty, fifty-one, MSAD fifty-one, to the definition of municipal use or building. Carla?
Bill Shane is going to address these ordinance changes primarily because they're coming to us from the town council. This one is, we found this out when we were working with the school, that we don't actually have a list that's, in the permitted uses of school administrative district. We have municipal use or building, and our town attorney said that's not quite the same thing, and recommended that we add MSAD fifty-one to our ordinance, so that's what's happening. And wherever schools are allowed, which I think is pretty much every zone, it will be changed to say that.
Any elaboration, Bill?
Well, well, the entire staff always use the town and MSAD fifty-one interchangeably. The town attorney said, can't do that, so that's why we're here, and we all think it's silly, but we're following the advice of council.
It's a new town attorney, sort of. It's not, it's not Natalie Burns anymore.
Any questions or discussion from the board? Being none, I'll open the, yes, George?
Just for the record, because you and I discussed it before, I had a question as to whether it was perhaps a tiny step toward merging the budgets. Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Being none, I'll open the public hearing, is there anybody from the public that wishes to discuss it? Since we have nobody from the public here tonight, I'll close the public hearing and look for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we recommend to the town council to approve the proposed amendments to the Cumberland Code of Ordinances, Chapter three fifteen zoning section four, word usage and definitions to add main school administrative district number fifty-one to the definition of municipal use or building.
Here a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? That's passed. Going to item three, to provide a recommendation to the town council on proposed amendments to the Cumberland Code of Ordinances, Chapter three fifteen zoning, to add private outdoor recreational improvements, is recommended by the ordinance committee. Carla or Bill?
I'll let Bill handle this one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Bill Shane, town manager. Working with the town council's ordinance committee, as well as the town council, they are requesting that you consider and give a recommendation toward this new definition, which is private outdoor recreational improvements. The best way, probably easiest way to define it, it would be more of what most people might have in their backyard, but on steroids. So the construction of a very large ice rink, or a very large outdoor basketball court, lit and sound and all that stuff, it's becoming not so much the improbable, but in some cases, it has been a problem for neighborhoods. So the council basically felt that while we can't do anything to change the existing ones that may have been built, that we should have a little bit more oversight on some of these larger type facilities. And these aren't intended for facilities that are temporary in nature, but these are probably more of a permanent type structure. The first page on the revisions kind of describes it, and the last two pages kind of give you a better idea of what we're looking for. And what we're looking for primarily is that somebody come into the town council, into the code office, and basically take out a permit like is required, and that it is reviewed by the code officer for size and scope, and how does it fit in a neighborhood. There are setbacks required, there are size limitations, and also, we're also looking for maximum lot coverage, noise prohibition, and excessive illumination that would be covered under these general regulations. It sounds a little bit like, you know, killing a fly with a machine gun and not a fly swatter, but what we're trying to deal with is the prevention of these type of facilities moving forward that no one could have imagined six months ago, or three years ago, that we'd have to be talking about this. But it's becoming more possible now, and we actually have a facility of this size and scope in our community now, so it's a tough one. But to prevent that from going forward and to protect neighborhoods and the characters, the characteristics of our neighborhoods, we felt that these type of, I don't, commercial facilities would be prohibited, but if this is for your own private use, it can't be classified as a commercial facility. And we don't identify these type of facilities currently on our ordinance as structures. Even if you pour concrete pad for refrigeration units and chillers and all that stuff, you still have to get electrical permits, you still have to get construction permits, but setbacks are an issue as well as the definition of structure. So this is intended to clarify this. I would doubt we'll see a lot of these going forward, but honestly, it's a safety net more than anything right now.
Questions from, yes, Lori?
Yeah, she had a quick one. Bill, without revealing addresses or communities or neighborhoods, can you give an example of something that has raised to this level that maybe was the tipping point for this language being developed?
An ice skating rink that was probably over a hundred feet long and close to forty, fifty feet wide, with concrete pad being poured, structures, chillers, out, temporary, permanent chillers that were mounted on pads, and permanent generators.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Paul?
A couple of things, Bill, on, on the first page, under the three fifteen four, the, it's, the statement one says shall not exceed ten percent of the total lot area. And then on, on page-
Careful, because there's two different-
Well, that's what I'm asking, I want clarification. On, and then on page five, under three fifteen seventy-three, it's fifteen percent, so we're talking about different scenarios, is that why there's a change?
I, I believe the first one is, there's, it is a little confusing. The first one, which is ten percent, is an outdoor recreational facility, which is-
Current definition.
Current definition, and-
Not applicable.
For use by the general public and/or commercial use, not residential. The second one is-
The new one.
And, and all that new language is at, for residents, not commercial use.
So this would change, you're right, that's a good catch, because it'll, it changes two definitions.
And then the other question I have is, I know in some, I'm not a pickleball player, but in some residential areas, they have banned pickleball because of the noise, and there are a number of lawsuits around the country I see occasionally. And I kind of looked up the, because you have a sixty decibel limit that you can measure if you have the right tool, which-
You have a tool.
Which we have. A, a pickleball, if you've ever sat, which I know you have, on Valhalla, on the porch out back, you can hear the, it's pretty loud, that they're playing on the tennis court, probably from two hundred yards, a hundred fifty yards away. So I looked up what the, it makes about eighty, up seventy to eighty-five decibels from five hundred feet. And-
Wow.
Some of the lawsuits have said usually over five hundred feet, nobody has sued or complained, so, but there is a quiet pickleball. That is, in fact, I talked to a tennis pro on a trip recently, and, and he said it's a lot better. But anyway, the sixty decibels would be interesting. I, if somebody were in a res, close knit residential community, built a pickleball court in their backyard, which doesn't take much property, that would be very annoying, I don't care what time of day-
I agree with-
Here and that, click, click, click. So something the sixty may, may catch, you know, may be applicable.
I don't know the size of that court, Paul, do you? I think it's over six hundred square feet, though, that's only thirty by twenty, so it's definitely bigger than that, so. The size of the court, this would come, a regulation sized court would have to go through the code office.
Yeah, but it would be allowed, right, if there were no-
It would be allowed, except that the decibels till ten o'clock at night would, that, you're right, it would be pretty much a nuisance for-
So anyway, could, could be interesting, sorry.
Josh?
Bill, last month's rise?
Yes.
That's the new, what, what's the decibel level allowed for commercial use?
I think it's sixty.
At the property line?
I think it's sixty.
Seventy last month.
Seventy or seventy-five?
In the ordinance?
I, I, yeah.
Last month, yeah.
I empathize, perhaps, but I think this is over, there are so many things about this ordinance that drive me absolutely insane. I mean, if I have a pool, that's more than six hundred square feet, so that, I don't believe is governed by this. So I could put up as many speakers as I wanted, I could put up as many lights as I wanted, and I would not be in violation of an ordinance, I might be in violation of A, common decency, and B, I'm sure the police could come for a noise limit, or noise call, or whatever, but I'm not subject to the ordinance. There's a residence on Main Street, because I drive by it every day, that has a driveway that's big enough that they actually play pickleball on it quite regularly, that would not be governed by this, because it's their driveway. Somebody playing basketball on a large driveway, again, could have as, make as much noise, have as much light. We are regulating something in a certain case and letting everything else go, and they're the exact same use. And sixty decibels is-
Is low.
Equivalent of normal conversation.
Right.
I think that's a pretty low limit. I guarantee you, I'm probably speaking over sixty decibels now, at least in my head. There's the foot candle issue, on section E, you know, the light limit is in excess of zero foot candles, parenthetically, one lumen per square foot, I'm not sure which one is correct. I think it's one lumen per square foot in the zoning ordinance for commercial use. The hours of operation for regulating noise are not the same as the hours of operation regulating lighting, that seems a bit strange to me. We have language in there that says, in order to be, in regards to noise, in order to be subject to enforcement, such a noise shall be inherently and recurrently generated. What's inherently, my definition of inherently and recurrently might very well be different than someone else's definition of inherently and recurrently, that's not specific. It's got to be measured by sound, level meter manufactured, it's not, we might have them, but we're not putting them up at property lines and letting them sit there and run to have any idea of how often it happens, to even have a basis of a discussion about whether it's recurrently and inherently. This, I would like all neighbors to get along, good fences make good neighbors, I don't think we should have a zoning ordinance that requires fences.
Other thoughts?
Well, I'll just give you some thoughts on, you know, my experience as a homeowner. But I think, okay, we had an ice rink, probably twenty by thirty foot, and we put that up every year for six or seven years, and took it down. Some years, we used it a couple of times, some years, we used it for, more than a couple of times, you know. I think that would be exempt.
That would be, that's correct.
Because it's temporary, seasonal.
That's correct.
Okay, and I think that we were fairly typical, that that was a fairly typical instance. We also have a giant patio in the back. I think that's exempt as well. Right?
Yes.
My neighbors play pickleball in their driveway occasionally, that's exempt, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so, so a lot of what people are doing is going to be exempt, and you don't have to worry about any of the applications. So what you really, are you talking about really a permanent structure?
Correct.
Yeah.
So you could put two or three pickleball courts in your backyard, and that might be a little bit more problematic than the one in your driveway.
Right.
Just clarification, in the TCD, it would be controlled, right? Because it's seventy decibels, I asked that, it's only in the TCD, regardless of the size or any-
Sound and light would be regulated in the TCD, correct?
Yeah, okay, just to be clear.
Other, yes?
I, I was just curious about swimming pools, would those be included?
I, I don't-
In ground, above ground?
As, as long as they were for private use, I would say probably they're not, I, I don't see them being included here.
Okay, and patios, I think, is getting to me, because you can make a massive patio, and I can paint lines on it and call it a basketball court, but it, this wouldn't be included? I mean, is that the, is this really the language that we want to stick with if we want to do this?
We don't require permits for patios. You know, we do for decks, but not for patios, because of the hardscaping and all the other elements that we would normally think of a patio, but how do you call a forty by forty piece of pavement that you put your couple pieces of lawn furniture on and play pickleball on, not a patio? Or, or do you call it, I, I don't, I don't think we're going to get into a lot of these type of occurrences. When they are going to be close to questionable, the code officer is going to push them to the Board of Assessment, the Board of Appeals, because he is not going to want the neighbors to be subject to a, just a permit to use, a use permit, when maybe we should bring it to another level of hearing, so the neighbors are notified of, you know, of the construction, or the future construction. And like every building permit, it's subject to a thirty day appeal period, so that's why we often say, you know, just remember, you know, there's a thirty day window here that your neighbors could appeal if you haven't talked to anybody, and all of a sudden, we get a request for, you know, a hearing, that, that would obviously have to go through the court system, but it could happen. That wasn't the case in what happened in the reason for this ordinance. I mean, we met with the entire street and all the neighbors, invited even the owner, and she, and they chose not to come. So this is a, this is different, and I don't feel much differently than most of you feel about this, because it seems like we really haven't had an issue, but there's been a reoccurring pattern that has given no protection to this neighborhood, or any neighborhood in the future, from these larger type of structures. And I think all this is doing is kind of giving us a small safety net for the code officer to say, either I'm going to deny the permit, or send you to the Board of Appeals, and then at least the neighborhood would be notified, and they could have their day in front of a, you know, a town board, just to hear their concerns. Because right now, you can build these facilities without any permit, as long as it's for private use.
Well, let's be honest to the, that now with the proliferation of AAU sports, these travel teams and everything, and the other thing of the, really the large mega mansions that are being built in town now, there is a push on certain parents to give their child an edge up, be it in hockey, or basketball, that would, and even baseball. I mean, my understanding is that one parent even built an indoor basketball court. So, I mean, this is, this isn't something I think that's gone willy-nilly, it's kind of, I think, the way things are going with sports in this country, with parents, you know, trying to get that athletic scholarship for the kid, or do all, that, it's a way of life. And I kind of agree with you a little bit, Josh, on some of the technical points, but I think the thing is that we're trying to, this thing is meant to kill the stuff that's just totally outrageous, or put it, put it under control, and I think it's going to, it will proliferate more than less as time goes on. Yes, Josh?
Number one, I mean, but you're talking about six hundred square feet, which might be a pickleball court, and I'm not sure you can call a pickleball court outrageous, you may or may not be happy if your neighbor puts it in. I don't think we should just be solving all the problems with regulation, and, and my problem is that, you're right, many things won't be regulated, but how come if my driveway is big enough to play pickleball on, I'm not regulated, and my neighbor who wants to play pickleball but has to put a pickleball court in, I can, you know, call them at ten PM and say, you're making too much noise. I, I have a problem with a double standard. If, I, I'd be okay with performance standards of noise, though I think sixty decibels measured at the line is a little bit low, and light standards, if we decide whether it's zero lumens or one foot candle, but if we're going to do that, then it should be across the board. Because if I'm in my pool shining spotlights around, then I should be subject to the same regulation that somebody who put a pickleball court in is. And if I'm making way too much noise on my deck, then I should be subject to the same regulation that somebody who has a skating rink is. We are, we're, we're preventing people from doing things that maybe I've already done. And I have a big problem with, I have a big problem with two things. I have a big problem with two different standards, and I also have a really big problem with saying you can't use more than fifteen percent of your property to do something that you want to do with it. If, if somebody wants to put twelve pickleball courts in their backyard, to me, that's largely their prerogative. I mean, I think if, it's certainly their prerogative if they can use those twelve pickleball courts and not annoy the heck out of their neighbors, if they're out in the middle of nowhere, you know, and they're, you, you know, they use fifty percent of their property, but their neighbors still have huge empty space between them and their house, you know, I, I-
Yeah, and-
We, we, we have to be good neighbors, we, we don't have to have regulation that enforces good neighborly conduct.
I was thinking some of the lot sizes, like in town, are just too small, that, that wouldn't be enough space to give them the ability to do anything, and they, if they wanted to. And I think we're, we're not, this is not all inclusive enough for me with the swimming pools, with the patios that could be converted into basketball courts, or whatever. with the patios that could be converted into basketball courts or whatever, to say that we're treating everybody equally. Is there a way that we go back to the ordinance committee with some of our comments and then we kind of do this? I don't know how that works.
No, that's why we're here tonight. If you have recommendations that might go, and one recommendation might be, subcommittee of this group to meet with the ordinance committee. That's, that's absolutely appropriate. We've done that before in other ordinances.
Paul? Then I'll go to everybody. Paul? I think that, in, in general, I think this is a good idea. I think a lot of interpretation is subjective and I agree that we, we can't define it exactly as it could occur. I've read enough about lawsuits, so not just about pickleball, about this, what this might prevent, that I think the subjectivity by the code enforcement officer or the planning board would, could be very useful in certain circumstances. I, I think, remember last month's meeting, it annoyed me a little that some of the people said that the light was like looking at the sun from the rise. And I'm thinking, why is that? We, you know that I dealt with light a lot when we were back years ago. And why, if, if anybody ever complained, why wasn't the regulation of the light that had, can't, it's not by foot candle, I don't think, but a certain amount of light can't pass the border or the property line? So why wasn't that enforced? So I worry as much about not enforcing things as about over-regulating. I despise regulations in general, like the federal government has two hundred thousand regulations. And remember the last administration, the rule was if you create a new one, you've got to eliminate two. Well, it didn't exactly work that way. But I do think, again, because of potential lawsuits and the type of thing that I think you're trying to prevent, I'm in, generally in agreement with this idea. But the last thing I'll say is I don't know why we don't have a noise ordinance that would not just cover the TCD. And I'm surprised that hasn't happened before, that somebody at two in the morning is blasting, you know, five hundred decibels that is going to, to their neighbors. So I don't know why the council or, we haven't heard about it, why don't we have a noise ordinance for everyone, not just for this situation?
Is it okay if I respond to that, Mr. Chairman? Because we had one proposed.
Yeah, go ahead.
So we brought one before the town council and they asked if the chief of police could come forward at a meeting and just explain how they're dealing with noise. And he basically said that disturbing the peace and there is another term he used, not, but I use disturbing the peace. Typically is enforced from about ten PM till seven AM and that's, that's typically the standard. In his five years here, we've only issued, I don't even know if we've issued one summons. We've issued a bunch of warnings, but not a lot of summons to that. And he felt that, that enforcement of the law was more effective than a ordinance, a nuisance ordinance. So he recommended to the council that they not go forward with a nuisance ordinance at this time. They're still deliberating on that because there are a lot of neighborhoods that want to see a nuisance ordinance. But I think the, the difficulty with that ordinance is typically the enforcement. It's a civil case and it just, it takes years sometimes to get those things worked out. And the cost isn't free, so.
George, you want?
Bill, it just occurs to me, I was on the appeals board for twenty-two years, you'll remember, and I do remember a few things about the ordinance, unfortunately. But the special exception, under the special exception, we did have decibel levels enumerated, which was sixty decibels as I remember it. And the issue was always coming up relative to nursery school situations in, in neighborhoods and the like. And it was always a bone of contention as to exactly how much sound was really a problem and so on. But I don't understand why, I mean, that's been in place for years and years and years.
Correct.
And we had this, as I remember, we had the special exception ends up getting watered down at one point a little more than it was originally in terms of, I don't know, what uses were allowed or whatever.
Correct. And, and that's still.
It seems to me that it, that it's. I agree with Paul. I, I, I like the idea of letting people do what they want. But we ought to have some kind of a standard that can be more or less universal as far as the ordinances are concerned, that'll take care. Somebody's having loud parties and you live next door and at eleven or twelve at night, if the sound ordinance is being obviously trampled on, there should be some enforcement possible. And as you say, most people are going to take care of these problems themselves. They're going to go over to the neighbor and say, could you calm down? And the neighbor is usually going to, going to do that. So how many times this has come up, I don't know. But it just seems to me that the sound ordinance ought to be a universal and make it, make it seventy, make it eighty. Whispering at a, at a, at a property line doesn't seem to be an egregious nuisance, but.
Anybody else? Let me open the public hearing for anybody in the public wishes to comment on it. Being done, I'll close the public hearing. Okay, where does everybody want to go on this thing? We seem to be, some folks want a little bit more work done. Some think it's going to kill the major problems. While the minor ones continue, so I will await your thoughts of where we want to go. Yes?
I think we need more time on this and I think we, having a smaller meeting with the town council to discuss it further. I'm probably more aligned with Josh on this. I'm not somebody that wants to see us over-regulate our town to the point where, you know, we're in people's backyards watching to see what's, what, what they're doing or not doing. I know that's a little bit of an exaggeration, but, and that was kind of why I asked the question, Bill, earlier about, you know, what was the tipping point for this language being developed? Because I'm blissfully, obviously unaware in my neighborhood that this stuff is going on. So I'd, I'd be concerned that we've had some problems and so now we're going to turn to regulation rather than really looking at some other mechanism.
Paul?
While our, it seems to me this four-inch-thick code book here is, there are a lot of regulations. Our town is regulated by ordinances. I do think we could ask the council, as, as been addressed, to try to make it more equitable to not just this group, but to in general. And I don't know if that's something the council would consider, but I think that would be worth, worth the effort. I'm still in general supportive of, of what they're trying to do.
Yes, Anne?
Excuse me. Yeah, I, I think, first of all, that people are entitled, you know, to the private enjoyment of their property. And that there are things that you may want to do on your property, like our seasonal ice rink, that, that are pretty common. I mean, this is something, you see them, at least when my kids were that age, you saw them everywhere. And this, this regulation seems like something that would be part of a homeowners association. You know, it's where you have a lot of stuff, you know, that, that you can and can't do. And people, not everybody wants to be part of a homeowners association. So I would hate to see us regulating the ordinary private enjoyment of people's property. And I, I, I think that, as we discussed, a lot of the stuff that I'm thinking of would be exempt. And I might be supportive if we could, you know, become convinced that the ordinary recreational activity that people like to enjoy on their property is not going to be a problem under this regulation.
So this. I'm sorry.
I mean, I don't think my feelings are too well hidden on this one. But I will just say, while I agree wholeheartedly with Anne, I also get the counterpoint, which is the quiet enjoyment of my property is also perhaps not listening to the quiet, the not-so-quiet enjoyment of your property. So I, I'm definitely not in favor of this change. I don't think it would be a bad idea to, you know, A, focus on performance standards, being noise levels and light levels at the property line and applying it more widely so that, I don't really care what you do with your property or what you do on, on your property. The question is, is it going to affect the people next to your property?
Yes.
And to me, that should be the focus, not you can't do this, you can't do that. It's do whatever the heck you want, generally speaking. But don't let it impact your butters.
So how do we proceed from here? Do we send?
Peter, can I say one more thing? What's to prevent? Apparently there are only two or three uses, hockey, permanent hockey rinks and basketball courts or whatever. Why not add the most likely to be egregious in the special exception?
But somebody could build a baseball field.
Uses in that ordinance in the first place, but if you added a couple of those uses, then they'd be, when they, at least when they create the situation, they'd have to conform to the special exception ordinance, which is not egregious.
But George, somebody could build a baseball field, somebody could build a soccer field. Crazy as they are here.
So, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
The, the reason this is before you is in the very first meeting with the town council, we had over probably twenty, twenty-five neighbors here in the room with the town council asking for help because of the impact on their private enjoyment of their own lots. Several years ago, probably four or five years ago, the first ice skating rink was built and the construction of that was, was problematic. It was disturbing to the neighborhood while they built it. It was built by contractors with big earth moving equipment. And it was put in and I don't know if it was ever used. Same thing, chillers, everything was built in there. And there was a concern, but it didn't get very far. Fast forward to last year and this large, large, the old ice skating rink was ripped out and this large facility was put in almost within fifteen feet of the property, property lines. Fifteen to twenty-foot arbivides were lined, the entire property as a buffer all the way around. All kinds of amenities were added to this property to kind of basically show it was for, for one, for one home. Then the electrical application started coming in for chillers and generators and then for exterior lighting. And then the latest was, you know, a forty thousand dollar outdoor speaker system. So all of this got to a point where they say, what do we do? What can I do as a resident to protect my private property? And we actually went to the state, asked for their assistance, and how do we regulate this facility? Because nobody considers that a structure. So we had to fix the ordinance to define these as structures. We had to have setbacks from the property line, which is in this. And again, this may be the only time we ever use it if another one of these facilities comes back and it just sits there dormant for fifty years. But that would be my hope because I would really hate to see this happen again to a neighborhood. And this was a pretty quiet neighborhood, never had an issue, never had a problem. It's not an HOA, so they really can't do much to enforce any of this stuff. But we have done the best we could with the town attorney to ask for some relief. And how do we get there? While on the surface, a private outdoor recreational improvement seems a little over the top, but this was the best solution that we could come up with after multiple meetings with the town attorney and the town ordinance committee and the town council. So that's how it all got here to you. And any recommendation to improve or enhance or change would be definitely welcomed because nobody feels great about this because the unintended consequences of regulation is more regulation. And we just don't really want to go down that rabbit hole too quickly. So this was an attempt to try to prevent maybe future occurrences again from happening, this one getting ripped out for something else that who knows what it would be. And I think it was probably the least harmful to most residents in our community today. The code officer, as George explained, we used to have special exceptions every month in front of the zoning board. So we basically shrunk those down to be less burdensome, burdensome on the residents. And if the resident meets a certain criteria under the special exceptions, he can issue the permit. If they're close, he kicks it up to the board. And that would happen in this case with any of these larger projects that would come forward. So the majority of them would be taken care of, right? Just like a regular building permit would be taken care of. But those ones that are kind of pushing the limits of the intent of, of what's supposed to happen in your house versus down at Twinbrook are, are going to be protected now. So that's the rest of the story. I probably should have started with that. But we were faced with really no good solutions by the current ordinances we had, so that's why this was added.
Would the appropriate thing, one of the possibilities would be for us to table it and have the ordinance committee review our minutes as far as what our concerns were with no, no decision one way or the other. Just table it with sending them the minutes. Because you do keep really good minutes so that they will see what the concerns, would that be an appropriate thing?
Yeah, even watching the, the video of this would be probably just as helpful. Because I think your concerns are the same concerns the council had when they first approached this until they met with all the neighbors and heard the concerns of each of the neighbors. So I'd be happy to bring that back as a recommendation. I, the urgency on this, I mean, we're gosh, you know, it's sixty degrees out. I don't think we're going to be ice skating too much longer outside anyway. So I think if, it could wait another month and I'll ask the council to table it until they can at least hear your concerns.
Bill, rather than going to this level, did the ordinance committee, the council, consider just making changes to the ordinance or the ordinances to have performance standards of, you know, thou shalt not create more noise than X number of decibels at the property line. Thou shalt not create light that it goes over your property line greater than one foot candle.
Yes. The, the other, the other piece of that was looking at a licensing ordinance, which the council could do without going through zoning. And that licensing would be to license these types of facilities. I think they would like to avoid that if possible, but that was the other track that they were looking at. The town attorney kind of recommended against that, but felt this was a, a better use of everyone's time because she, as well as most of our staff, does not believe that this is going to be a reoccurring problem in the community. Because most people are talking to their neighbors. This is an instance where it just wasn't possible.
So are we ready to do the table with forwarding our discussion points to the council? If so, I'll look for a motion to table.
Will the recommendation include our open, that we're open to a secondary meeting if, if they so choose to further discuss it?
Right.
Okay.
I'll make a motion, but it's not going to be the table.
Well, go ahead. It's a free country.
I will make a motion that we recommend to the town council to not accept the proposed amendments to the Cumberland Code of Ordinances, Chapter three fifteen zoning, to add private outdoor recreational improvements as recommended by the ordinance committee, but instead to explore other options such as performance standards or other means to. explore other options such as performance standards or other means to accomplish the intended goal.
Okay, do I hear a second to that motion? Hearing none, the motion dies for lack of a second.
I will make a motion that we table any recommendation to the town council on proposed amendments to Cumberland Code of Ordinances, Chapter 315 zoning, to add private outdoor recreational improvements as recommended by the ordinance committee.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Actually, motion to table is not desusqueable, but I missed out on that. Okay, so that takes care of that one. We go to item four, which is to provide a recommendation of the town council on proposed amendments to the Cumberland Code of Ordinances, Chapter 250 subdivision of land, Section 12-1 flowchart, to correct section references to Section 17, review and approval of a plan for a major subdivision, to clarify that a sketch plan review is not required when a conservation subdivision pre-application workshop has already been conducted with the planning board.
Carla, my only question would be if any project, whether it's a conservation clustered or traditional, if they go through a pre-application workshop, should we be requiring a sketch plan review? Why are we only do, why are we only limiting that for conserva-? I mean, I know that's our, what we like, but theoretically, if we go through a pre-application workshop, haven't we had that discussion? And maybe we've said, okay, in this case, a traditional makes more sense, why are we going to then make them come forward to do a sketch plan to say, yep, the traditional makes more sense?
So you're saying in, in a zoning district that doesn't, that allows traditional clustered subdivisions and, and we pick one, the board picks one, why do they then have to come?
Right, I guess what I'm saying is sketch plan review, something along the lines like a sketch plan review will not be required if a subdivision pre-application workshop has already been conducted by the planning board. If we've gone through a, a workshop and we've decided.
Yep.
That for whatever reason, a clustered is the appropriate use or a traditional is the appropriate type. That's really what the sketch plan review process was for, was determining what they should be presenting to us.
So how we could easily fix this is where there's a change to Section 25017A sketch plan review, and the new language is in parentheses of sketch plan review will not be required if a conservation subdivision pre-application workshop has already been conducted. So we could just take out conservation?
Correct.
That would be fine with me. It's a good point.
All right with you, Bill?
All right with Carla, it's okay.
Why, why was conservation in there?
Because it, there was this heightened sense of we need to have a pre-application workshop with the planning board to talk about what the natural resources are and blah, 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 blah. And I think we were all focused on.
It was more intense.
That than we were the other one, just an oversight, really.
Okay.
Any, any other, Paul?
We're looking at the sketch, right? The flow sheet?
Well, yeah, now we'll go up there.
Minor question, but I, I noticed there is a 25013, then it goes down to 25013B.
Okay.
Is there an A somewhere? Anyway, and then over on the other side, there is a 25014 and then a 16, and what happened? And the 15 is eliminated, is there a 15 or? I don't get the.
Right.
The numbering, just for.
Christina, you caught those, that those were the wrong ones, that 15 should be 16.
Yeah, because 15 was not for minor subdivision.
Okay.
So, and that was the only one that caught my eye, because that's what we were looking at for whatever reason.
Didn't bring my ordinance.
Anyway, I'm just bringing it up before it's finalized.
There is a, so 25013A pre-application meeting with town planner and code enforcement officer prior to submission of, so that's not, that's just between the planner and the code enforcement. Whereas this.
Not on the flowchart.
Right.
Right.
Well, I don't, it, yeah, no, it's, it is, oh, it's labeled here as 21512A. It's really 25013A. I believe.
I think we're tying ourselves in knots.
Well, anyway, that could be fixed. I'm just bringing it up to, maybe it's right.
Let me, let me give you a quick answer. So we're wondering why.
Yeah, 25012 is.
Is traditional subdivision.
25012A is traditional subdivisions, a def- basis.
That would be why.
That was just a typo.
Well, it's that with the traditional subdivision, there's, you don't go through anything to look at where are the natural resources, which, which design is better. This is saying you're already doing a traditional subdivision. In that case, it would be R1, R2, which is outlined in 25013, general subdivision procedures. So 25012, there, it exists, but it's really not saying a lot.
Okay, all right, just so before we went to press, I.
Yes, I understand what you're saying. It's a good catch.
Somebody can look at it.
Good catch. So let us, we'll look at that again, which makes sure that there's no reason it shouldn't be like that.
So what are we, what are we make a, making a motion on?
Public hearing.
Well, yeah, I'll open the public hearing, close the public hearing. So what are we making a motion on?
The proposed language change. Which we are going, which if we go to a motion, I would just say, we approve, we would recommend the amended language as opposed to the presented language.
Okay, that sounds, is everybody comfortable with that?
I will make a motion that we recommend to town council, the amended proposed amend revisions to the Cumberland Code of Ordinances, Chapter 250 subdivision of land, Section 12-1.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed, it's unanimous. And finally, we go to item five, which is a report on growth permits issued per the Growth Management Ordinance, Chapter 118-9, presented by our town manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For you is, is the staff's recommendation to not make any changes to the existing growth ordinance, which allows for up to 65 growth permits to be issued each year. That can max out, worst-case scenario, up to 85, borrowing 10 from previous year and 10 from the next year. But then those years have to be adjusted as you go forward. We've never, I think maybe one year we hit that, and that might have been when we built the apartments down on Route One, or it was very close to that. But typically, we are around 37 on average per year for probably the last 24 years. But with that 37, we also have to add how many we've added for exempt, exemptions. And over the last 20-some-odd years, we've averaged about 11 exemptions per year. So when you look at the total gross, it's closer to 48 units per year. And that's what we've been consistently doing for several decades now. The Growth Management Ordinance was modified a few years back. I think our old cap was closer to 50 than it was to 65. And really, we never really hit that cap either. But we saw, we saw some of these projects on the horizon, especially the apartment projects, which were deemed as essential as part of meeting our requirements under the comprehensive plan for more transitional-type housing. So we moved forward with that, and I think that was under a contract zone, so some of that was already exempted as part of how we counted. So apartment buildings get a little complex, but for the most part, we've been right around 48 houses a year for the last two decades. I also included in your package, again, the last time I was here, we talked about the GP COG 2019 growth report and the cost of growth. And it's really a fascinating report, only because shortly after that, we went through COVID, we kind of froze in time. So a lot of the elements of that report were kind of enlightening, because it kind of matched up to where the new census data came out. And many of you have picked up that instead of became, being classified as maybe the oldest community in Cumberland County, we were becoming and trending more toward a younger demographic because of the infill of the lots that were now sold during COVID and after COVID. Those homes were sold by empty nesters, who basically kids had all grown up and they stayed in place, and now they were ready to move on. A lot of baby boomers have basically downsized or, or moved south, and those homes were occupied by younger couples with younger families. That kind of matches a little bit with the decline in the school population we saw, saw at the, the end of last decade. And that's why two schools were basically given up, given back to both towns, because the district wasn't using them. That's resulted in a decrease in our population for some time. And in Cumberland, we've probably, we haven't quite recovered from that. I mean, we basically have, saw about a, a 13% decrease over 18 years. We've, we've built about 650 houses, and during that same period of time, we saw 200 less kids in our school system, which didn't make a whole lot of sense from Cumberland. North Yarmouth didn't have as dramatic a drop, but they've had a fairly level increase in population, especially the school age population. But over the last five years, our growth has been averaging about 5.8% in Cumberland, and it's starting, you know, it's, it's starting to get back to where we were, I'd say, 20, 25 years ago, when the population of the school was around 2,400 kids. So everything kind of is balancing out again. It's like your own neighborhoods, you know, they were filled with kids at one time, and then they all disappeared. And then all the grandparents stayed and didn't go anywhere, and now they're starting to basically repopulate again, which is a very cool thing, and I am in that category. So I basically had two sons when we started at Crossing Brook, and neighborhood full of kids. All the kids left, and now all the grandkids are coming back, and, and younger families are moving into our neighborhoods again. Our issue, obviously, in Cumberland is just the cost of housing, and it's extremely expensive. And we've, we've done a lot of research in that, and that's not going to change. We are always going to be a very desirable community, and we're also, always going to be a very expensive community. And that's why the town unsuccessfully tried to be a catalyst in that change, and the project just wasn't a good fit for most of our community. That's not going to stop housing from happening in Cumberland. It's just the type of housing we do have to be careful with. Getting affordable housing, and that's at 120% of our area median income, and that's an income right now that's, I think, close to $135,000 for a family, which is a lot of money to afford an average-priced home in Cumberland, which is somewhere in the low 400s. So until interest rates start coming back down, it's going to be, again, not helping a real affordable issue. And that may only be rental housing going forward, and I, I don't know what that's going to look like in the future. It'll probably have to be private development, and hopefully, we can work together with bringing some of that to our community. But I don't believe you're going to see another project from, from the council, probably until the comprehensive plan is back and well underway again. Because I think they're going to have to look at all of those elements. I think this report that you have in your packet and the information, I think, will be a critical piece of that. I think discussion about what type of housing, where it should go, the density of that housing, it's all about density for affordability. And unless we can do a higher-density type of housing project, it is going to be very, very difficult at the construction prices we're seeing today. So while this is not directly tied to the growth permit recommendation from staff, we're recommending it just stay in place as it is. But there's going to be a lot of discussion in the next few years with the new comp plan. I'm hopefully, I'm hoping that the committee is appointed over this summer, and then I'm hoping they get to start on their work this fall. So it's going to be a lot of work, and as many of you know, it's, it's a long process, several years.
Bill? As our earlier discussion today, I kind of wish we'd have put this out probably prior to the election, for nothing else but kind of information. I think, you know, there's a lot of stuff, oh, we got building too many buildings. Well, as it turns out, if you read this thing, we've never met our growth ordinance, and, and probably 25% of those 48 units are, are exempt and part of our thing, and then a bunch of other stuff that was contract zoning. So even though we kind of mentioned it anecdotally, I think, and do you hit people between the eyes with the actual numbers? And I think it, and as I said, it's why I recommended that this, the next crier, that this presentation that you did for us, just be, be referenced in the crier, because I think people have also forgotten that COG report. And I think a lot of people don't re, don't really, when I mentioned it to three or four people, they had forgotten the demographics of how, you know, we've now gotten younger. And the thing is, like you say, as we go into this comprehensive plan, younger population means we can't kick the can down the road anymore on this school. It's there. You either spend a half a million dollars a year on portable classrooms, or you spend part of that to, to do debt service. And it's the same thing, you're going to have the same effect on your recreation program. Right now, what, in the last few years, we've gone to $500,000 annually, to 1.7 million of, I think somebody told me that the first day of recreation registration this year, they took in $600,000. So it's another thing that people bitch about fields and everything, but when you add the recreation programs, the younger families and everything, and you reduce two fields, it doesn't take a Wharton MBA to figure out that you've got issues. So I think to put that out for the public, to educate ahead of the, and also to educate, we're going to have between two and three new council members who have no idea of what, you know, the history is. And so I, I, I just think some of this stuff is really eye-opening, that we just ought to get it back out on the crier, so we've got, instead of people throwing grenades at each other back and forth on Facebook, that we've got actual numbers and, and data to, to back up. I, I, I just think this was very useful, and I'll let any other members make any other comments they want. George?
Oh, I, Bill, you, you, I think we're saying that the average house in Cumberland right now is 400 and some odd thousand?
No, that's what a, a price that a affordable buyer.
That would be an affordable house.
Right. At 120% of our, the income of our town.
And the problem with that is that, to use a good example, a little ranch on a half-acre lot on Greeley Road Extension, asking price 585,000, I think, sold for 650. And it wasn't an apparition.
It's a small house.
No, George, that's the problem with even Crossing Brook today. Crossing Brook was the first development that Cumberland built as an affordable housing neighborhood that I moved into over 30 years ago. And the last house that sold in our neighborhood was a 26 by 32 unimproved ranch that had been there for 31 years, and it sold for 625.
Do you have any idea how many units have sold at the mark? Because they sold none in their first round.
I don't think they've sold any. I don't think any have been under contract.
And they've reduced the prices since.
Yeah.
And I, I believe they still haven't sold any. And it doesn't usually surprise me, because when you're talking about. And it doesn't usually surprise me, because when you're talking about a seven hundred square foot unit for six hundred thousand dollars, and, and a parking spot that's going to suffer some in the winter, I, I don't know, but.
I'll get down the line here. Lorraine, any thoughts?
I was just, I, the thing I think that stood out for me when, leading up to the vote for the affordable housing, housing project, was everybody talking about, I can't pay my taxes, I can't pay my taxes. And so the sentence in this report that really stuck out for me was, the factors that are burdening the Cumberland's property taxpayers are largely beyond the control of municipal government and are driven by regional trends in housing and transportation. And I think that that's part of the message that needs to be sent out into the community, because I think the community is looking to all of the committees, the planning board, the town council, everybody, to somehow solve this tax burden problem, and it's really not something that is under the purview of the government right now.
Anne?
It's a trend.
Yeah.
Okay.
What I, I'm wondering, are we going to get an update to that CP cog?
The GP cog study? No, we haven't. We had the census come out, we gave the census data, we did the market study on the project, and that was it. We could ask, we could ask, sure.
Yeah, because it has, it's four years old now. What really jumped out to me again is the Cumberland's population growth is driven by young families. And if you look at that chart, we are, you know, us and Wyndham, and we are, appear even younger than Wyndham, and I think that's wonderful. You know, I think that's wonderful. And I, I mean, I want to live in a community that has all that spread of age and, and family type and so on, and where I can maybe go to watch games at the high school instead of having to go down to the city to watch, you know, the Celtics or whatever, you know, and, and then we have these complaints, you know, like, we don't want to give them a turf field, because it's going to cost me ten dollars more in my taxes. You know, that's, to me, I, I, that's just so ungenerous. So anyhow, I, I, let's, let's look at an update and see how those young families are doing, and, and if we're still continuing to, to do that, to be a young community.
Great suggestion. Paul?
Yeah, I also was going to ask about, you know, what the expectation, expected date was for the GP cog. But I, I would be interested, Bill, just briefly, if, what would be one or two things you think there would be a major change if we had updated data? I mean, one thing we all see, of course, is North Yarmouth, buildings going up everywhere in terms of, it must affect school and the, and the ages, and I know, I know we're talking Cumberland, but still, North Yarmouth.
As a district, we, we pretty much broke the bank. I mean, we were, we were one in Cumberland County, Scarborough was two, Wyndham was three, North Yarmouth was four. So we, we held the first and fourth position for fastest growing communities over the last decade, and, and very similar growth in different age groups as well. So, yeah, we are connected at the hip, and I think to the point of, one of the things we ought to be looking at is looking at maybe more regional, regional solutions with our neighbors to build some, some projects that, you know, maybe we don't get the tax benefit or this benefit, but if we can together build something that collectively benefits us all, I, I really think that is a much, much more successful model than each of us trying to do something. And that has never been very cost effective, when we've each tried to do something. I think what's going to happen over the next decade is that we're going to see more regionalization of larger services. We're going to have to look at fire and EMS, we're going to have to look at police, not because we even want to, is that it's just trying to get these folks to fill the positions is becoming almost impossible. So we're relying more and more on our neighbors every day, and that's going to lead to some consolidation of these services. We'll have no choice, we'll absolutely have no choice. So that would be one thing, helping to lessen the steeper rise of services, maybe flattening the curve out a little bit.
Hopefully, your predecessor is listening.
Successor.
Successor.
Successor, I mean. Bob Benson, I don't know if he'd care, but.
I'm late for the predecessor.
I think, I think this report is very valuable, and agree that if we could get everyone to put it in their audio book or something, there's really good information in here that I think people need to know. And, and just as a comment for someone who is, you know, I've been living in Cumberland for four years, I have two kids, elementary school and the lower middle school, and we're here because of the school system. If we didn't buy that house four years ago, we wouldn't be here. And so I think that there's this balance between bringing the people in, increasing the tax base, and whatever that looks like, and, and the, keeping the schools the way they are, because otherwise, you're going to lose it, right? Otherwise, young families coming in, having some of that turnover, is, it's, it's not going to happen, because the schools, if they go down the drain, you know, will leave. So.
No, I, I don't think you're going to see that, that commitment from parents, but remember, only thirty percent of us have kids in the school system now. And that went down as low as twenty-five percent. When I was, my kids were here, it was probably closer to forty percent. So those, those will go ebb and flow. The one crazy thing that we've seen in this last decade, in the last, I'll say, the last four years, is that Cumberland has never been a very affordable community. So we have always hovered around, somewhere between forty and fifty percent of our population was never able to afford the median priced home. So if you look at what the median priced home is in Cumberland, I don't even want to throw a number out there, because it's crazy right now, but that home, over seven hundred thousand, is only affordable now by less than thirty percent of our, of our population. It used to hover between forty and fifty, and it just kind of hovered around there. And then all of a sudden, right, right during the pandemic, it spiked so high, and it's never come back down. It's like seventy-two percent of our community cannot afford the median priced home. So when you look at that demographic, you go, you have to say, how do you fix that? Because that is going to require an investment by private development with some help from the community to say, oh, we're okay if we basically want to build better, more affordable projects, but even more affordable, what does that mean? When it's four hundred thousand, most people would choke on that number if they came to you and said, this is an affordable housing project, and the houses all start at four oh five. You'd be looking at them, saying, oh, my gosh.
We're going to see it.
You're going to see half of it. This, the project that's coming, I think you're going to see half the units affordable, half the units market rate, and it's going to be a blend of the lower market.
Right, but the affordable are, the price of the affordable homes is going to be over four hundred thousand.
That's correct.
I mean, you're going, it's going to tear the scab off of, you know, people saying, oh, really? That, that's affordable?
But, I mean, when you look at the first house you bought, I mean, how much did you choke when you had to pay the first mortgage? You go, how are we ever going to afford that? I mean, my house was a hundred thousand dollars when we bought it, and I, you know, I was, oh, my gosh, how are we going to afford that? You know, some of you, my, my parents was thirty thousand in Portland, so it was, it, it's all relative to the times we're at, and, you know, I know it's related to income and stuff, but the number still is a big number, because most of us just don't have that higher number in our heads. Other thoughts, Josh?
Yeah, so Bill, one, I'll throw my hat in the ring for asking GP cog to redo it, but I might make it a little more general and see if we could get them on a five-year schedule.
Five years, okay, re, repeat.
Do it in twenty-five, thirty, just, you know, maybe we get it on their schedule, because I think the data is going to.
Valuable.
It's very valuable, and it's helpful, and it gives some perspective, but as it gets older, it gets.
Dated.
Right, gets less reliable. And the next couple of things, I'm not sure where the appropriate venue for, as the town attorney recently stated about us not having a standard for impact on the school system, but we were talking a little bit before about the school funding formula, and I think it would be great if that actually, if there was some information of actually how the school funding formula worked, and whether or not residential development was such the bugaboo that I think everybody assumes it is in terms of impact on tax rates through the school system. And I think that gets offset a bit by the school funding formula. But the school funding formula to everyone, including me, is a black box, and we have no idea how much the state is giving us, depending on what the, you know, okay, so development comes in, and it might add twenty kids to the school system, but what does that really mean in terms of impact to taxes?
If, if you go to the DOE website and just Google, just type in there, ED two seventy-nine.
I guess my point is that, yeah, I can go learn that. I think as a community, that might help people, again, have some perspective when they're looking at different developments, because as much as we've tried to bring commercial development to this town, in, you know, I mean, David Chase is a good example of sitting on commercial lots for years and years and years, and it's just, you know, hopefully, at some point, it continues to spread out of Portland and it gets here, but I'm not sure if or when that will be. The other thing that I found interesting as you were talking is that, you know, the school system used to have a lot more kids. And maybe just even publishing some of the graph showing school age population, what you're just talking about, like, in the affordability index, showing that over time, because I think a lot of people assume, I did, I mean, my daughter was right ahead of the big bubble that caused all the, or that is causing all of the temporary classrooms. I just sort of assumed our school age population was larger now than it has been in the past. Again, perspective is sometimes helpful, so.
Okay. Anne, sure.
This is a question I forgot to ask, but why are building permits for fifty-five and over, why are they exempt?
Because they have little impact on the school district.
I see.
Which are our biggest costs by far, seventy percent.
Well, I mean, I.
That's the honest answer. They may cloud it with something else, but that's the real answer.
Okay. But, and we don't consider the other impacts?
No, when we do a, a payment in lieu of taxes typically, with a development, they would exclude school taxes. So we've done a payment in lieu of taxes with Round Road, and that excludes everything but the, it excludes the school tax, so whatever the rest of the mill rate is, is applied to how we came up with that number.
Actually, one other thing. Carla, in that exchange you had with the town attorney, they did say, they, the town could assess a school impact fee, like a growth, separate from the growth impact fee. Is that a correct statement?
That is correct.
Has the council ever discussed doing something like that?
No, not yet. It's limited to very specific purposes, is my recollection. I'm not sure if it's just capital, I don't think it can be operations, but I will find out. But, yeah, and that's probably why it was easier to do the one impact fee, and I almost wonder if we had, we would have to do another study like we did for this impact fee, that would basically be the foundation of that report and how we got to those impact fee and permits.
Yeah, I remember, was, you, you might have been on the council too, George, when we went through that whole exercise of, of impacts. Well, I, I, I'm glad we had the time tonight to go over this, and I think if we can educate the public, and again, Josh, you raise a, a good thing, if we can get cog to, to.
I didn't.
To, well, both, but if we could, if we could do that, as I say, with a comprehensive plan coming up. So anyway, that takes care of our agenda. Carla, can you give us some kind of an idea of what's coming up in May, if you know?
Yes, I can. We will have, I think, Mineral Springs subdivision will be coming back, planning to do that. Definitely Rusty Lantern will be coming back. I don't know what's happening with the school. Did you get a better answer as to what happened with us? I was disappointed that they didn't come tonight to, to talk about it. We've had multiple meetings with the engineers and landscape architect about the, the proposed.
Harris Road, is that coming?
Harris Road may be ready, yep.
So we.
It's going to be a busy agenda.
Yeah.
And that leads to the question about the date. I know, Paul, you said you couldn't be here on the twenty-eighth of May.
I could be here the twenty-first, but.
Right. So my question, I sent it out, I think I've only heard from a couple of people.
Yeah, I, I answered, I can make it.
Yep. Show of hands, maybe, for meeting on the twenty-eighth?
My hand isn't going up, Carla, but I, I might be able to, I just don't.
You just don't want to commit right now?
Correct.
Okay. As long as we have a quorum, so four, I saw four or five hands go up, so I think we're going to be fine.
So do we have any other new business?
Just one thing, Mr. Chair. I am nervous about that meeting, because there's also a possibility that we will also have Skyview Drive back in play. We are, there's a new purchase and sale agreement that I met with the developer last week, and it appears that they are going to try to be on the May agenda for extension of Skyview Drive, which will initiate the purchase and sale of, hopefully, Back to Foley's Gym, getting that back, and even possibly resurrecting the senior housing project that the Zant Corporation walked away from. So I'm just, if we can get them on the hook, I'm asking your indulgence for a, a long meeting, if possible, or, you know, running, making the trains run on time, Peter, like you did a couple of months ago.
Well, maybe what we can do, and again, depending on the members, that maybe we could get going at six thirty.
Yep.
And.
It would be really important if we could get that back on.
I think if we can kind of sort out the ones where we're going to have, you know, we're going to have claymore mines and, and maybe move those back to try to get the ones that should, although I must say, tonight, I never thought we'd get tripped up on the record, the, the soccer fields and hockey rinks, but you always get surprised. So anyway, again, if, let's try to do it the twenty-eighth, try to do it at six thirty, and we'll try to make the trains run on time, and I hope the one I go on tomorrow does.
Bill, thanks for the report.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Is your last meeting, the June, June meeting?
Depending on what you have in June, yes. It may, it may be May, so I don't know. Matt officially starts on June third. I'm really here just to kind of overlap with him in June, so it might be his first meeting, but if we do get something back from, especially one of those Route One projects, there'll be, I will definitely be here, so that's, fingers crossed, that, we don't want to retread old ground.
No, I think the thing is, it's very important, if you can be here in June, and that Carla's agreed to babysit some of these things, because there's no way that, you know, it's cruel and abusive treatment for us to be flying too blind.
Well, some of these projects started back in two thousand and nineteen, if you can believe it, and they're finally coming to fruition, so we go as a team, you know?
So any, anything else? If not, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? We're adjourned, thank you, everybody.